Well. Help me out with the signal and get the traffic talk.
Sure. Don't know where it's going. Get one of these for money?
No.
I don't want to go.
Oh, and talk, I said, yeah, I've never seen them out of love.
I did it.
It actually hangs in his store.
Like that, we got four of them. When you're fitting, you're working out.
Where's the bus?
You were saying they're all.
Mr. Ryan gave you the bad one.
I think it says it's, oh, it's muted. All right, so it's muted until they unmute it.
That was the deal.
I apologize for being prophetic, claiming wide right last Tuesday night.
You're such a Giants, you know, Super Bowl against the Giants, Chris Norwood, same thing.
Two worst words in Bill history, wide right.
Right. Cemented forever.
Rambling. Sort of scare words.
What are they doing for the town?
Yeah, you already got.
We're sharing. Yes, we, we, we decided not to kill a tree.
Well, I already killed that tree.
Then I'll take one if you're killing. I have.
Hey, look.
You guys all clear and all to the constitution? No, no, we were just around doing nothing.
I'm just gonna sit down before I.
The recycler.
That is your cycle.
They already presented to me.
Big one down. Don't yell here, stop talking about it in here.
Sir, Badbridge is.
So you're gonna have to bridge earlier than the.
Until the appropriate part of the beginning.
Does anybody know what office, uh, flags and belags?
Technically.
She is going to tell.
You can find out.
Yes.
Do you think that's requirement number one?
I thought that we got something from the league at city town. I've gone.
Could be wrong.
We just got a bunch of starfish.
Why? Starfish reports.
Same way they did the highway where they built it and quonset floated it up and just dropped it.
Before they invented calamari, we had.
Side of the river.
Well, you didn't come out directly and stay replaced, you know, major refurb has been. Fortunately, it could be open in three months.
Seven magical starfishes.
Oh, my God.
Well, it will be a good story. I don't think we allowed Portuguese to sound until like.
We're Portuguese and not important.
We were. They all came over the river and boat. And father a month.
Yeah.
That old island.
The freeze is over.
Portuguese.
That Saturday.
I am not.
I did know that.
I am French.
That's a figure of friends.
I know.
We'll days to call the clown car, but.
One of the biggest.
Reasonably two fits.
Little tight.
Just hang it boy up there. You know, you're good.
Yeah.
Did you talk to God when you were lying on the floor there?
What are we waiting on? You.
Good question. Did you see?
I probably.
I saw you.
And they have a fence on the other side of a quiet river and they say everything.
Tell them.
Think so.
Stay, no room.
No room.
That ambiguous.
Might have it.
After like.
Haven't.
Now, nobody knows what it is.
It is ambiguous.
Yeah.
Asking if they're.
All we know is even know if you have them good or not.
If they gave me the option. You're not supposed to follow the rules.
I hope you agree something I told.
Hey, now you're on. You were on, you turned yourself back off.
Job.
Now you're on.
But he didn't argue with us.
We're not ready.
What do you know? No, not, no Abraham.
Oh, Abraham did.
Yeah, oh, he did. That's right, Joe.
I think we're starting.
Welcome to Monday night.
Okay.
Church session. Do a little Bible study down the end there.
This is okay. We're having fun.
We are a very erudite group.
Crazy old Jesus.
He's sitting there going, eh, you know, I don't know. Yes, we are on this side.
You want to get in terrible scenes.
Can you do?
No, I'm. Barbara's Ariam, she's just.
I guess we're not starting. We're experiencing technical difficulties.
Anyway, the issue in the New Hampshire primary is the border. And you know how many undocumented aliens they have in New Hampshire?
I'm sure several.
Ten thousand. And quite frankly, probably all Canadian.
Probably the border with Vermont.
Allowed to and the maniac.
That's right.
And don't give me.
What we got?
Space is a premium.
Sure. Well, I don't want the border.
They can do Zoom. I just can't. Is that what's happening?
Somebody's coming from. Somebody's coming from central.
It's funny, it's got to our lot. In like, I mean, they went to the problem. They cut to a farm.
Okay, Kevin, you're good.
We're good.
Some of these.
Now we're gonna.
There we go.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our January twenty second Portman Town Council meeting. First item of business, I just want to go over the emergency evacuation plan in the event of an emergency. Those of you who exit the rear of the auditorium and out the building, take a left, follow across the parking lot to the edge of the ball field. If you exit the front of the auditorium, follow the hallways to the exit sign. Again, exits the building, cross the parking lot to the ball field, and we'll wait for their instruction. And if you head out there, just be careful, it is still a little icy tonight. So that's just for the emergency evacuation. If we could all stand for our complaining, leaving some even sounds, I'm admitting, serving arms way. Thank you all. Before we get started, just a little housekeeping. We are, we are live streaming. On Zoom, you're participating remotely on Zoom. There's an icon for you to raise your hand. I will be called upon if you're calling in on your phone. Star six will allow you to mute and unmute your phone and star nine will indicate if you have a question. If you're participating remotely or in person tonight, please state your name and address to the town clerk. And we'll begin with our roll call.
Mr. Catson?
Here.
Ms. Abbott?
Here.
Mr. Sorry, Mr. Gleason?
Here.
Hamilton?
Yeah.
Mr. Lebec?
Yeah.
Dr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Aguirre?
Here. Okay, moving on, President's Executive Summary. We did not have an executive session, so I do not have any update. Move on to our first item. It's a presentation and recognition. Tonight we have a presentation of the town flag. We have the Portsmouth Historical Society with us is past president, Miss Anne Burns. Yes.
Can you hear me?
No, no. Yeah, I just have to get a little closer.
It is on.
Can you hear me now? Go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me now?
There we go.
Hi, everybody. I'm Anne Burns, as Kevin just said. Several years ago, a gentleman by the name of Sam Howard, who has the website Rhode Island Liberators, did a really intensive research and analysis of all the town flags, town and city flags in the state of Rhode Island. He concluded that Portsmouth probably had the very best one. Yes. And you can find more information on his website, Rhode Island Liberators. He was, however, really surprised that he could only find a flag in town council chambers. And I think there's another in the police department and the fire department, but he wondered why they weren't so long crowded all around town. The Portsmouth Historical Society agreed with that, and we set out to make it happen. We collaborated with Jennifer West, Maureen Daniels, who's a local graphic artist and the vector design, Peggy Karen, who has since passed away, and Mark and Denise Wilkie, who are the descendants of Elizabeth Wilkie. And they have possession of the original flag that was done, all collaborating together to come up with the as close a reproduction as we possibly could get. A little history about the flag itself. The town of Portsmouth has used a town seal as early as the year sixteen seventy six. It features a blue shield with seven eight-pointed gold stars, six in a circle around the seven. It is thought that the early settlers adopted the design from the arms of Portsmouth, England, which used a crescent with one etwa, which is the eight-point star. The settlers increased the numbers of etwas to seven and dropped the crescent. Perhaps the seven stars on the Portsmouth Rhode Island seal represent the Portsmouth compact signing on seven March sixteen thirty eight. Or did the settlers choose seven because it is a special number in the Bible, signifying completion and perfection? Another theory, no one knows for sure. Portsmouth, England's arms are believed to derive from Richard the First, the Lionhearted, eleven, eleven fifty seven to eleven ninety nine A.D., who ranges the King of England from eleven eighty nine to, it's not possible, you know that detail, but before Richard set up for the Crusades, he added a star with six wavy points above a crescent in Britain's seal. Two popular theories exist on the origin of the star. It could be the star Regulus in the constellation Leo, which is also the Corleones, the heart of the lions. Or Richard may have borrowed the design after seeing it used by the Eastern Roman Empire, who combined the star of Bethlehem for the Virgin Mary with the crescent symbol of the goddess Diana, after the conversion of Constantine Great Christianity. When Richard came back from the Crusades in eleven ninety four, he gave a charter to the New Seaport of Portsmouth and assigned as a seal a star with eight wavy points upon an upturned crescent. When the Portsmouth Historical Society was formed in nineteen thirty eight, Evelyn Chase asked Henry Wilkie to create a design and provided reference materials to incorporate the town seal. Henry enlisted the help of his wife, Elizabeth Anthony Wilkie, a visiting grad and art teacher. In nineteen sixty one, the town council asked Mrs. Wilkie to design an emblem that could be used as an insignia on town vehicles. And metal signs consistent with her design were created and placed at town building entrances. In nineteen seventy six, the Portsmouth Town Council asked Mrs. Wilkie to create a town flag. To come up with the design, she conducted careful research and connected with the city of Portsmouth, England. There were difficulties getting the azure blue and gold colors just right, which we also had, but the resulting flag is a stunning design.
Good on, clap if you like.
So we have these officially for sale now to the Portsmouth Historical Society website. And they're available two sizes, three by five and two by three. They won't come with the fancy gold trim unless you ask nicely that these put on for, for the town. So we thank you all for your collaboration. This is going to go on Town Council's chambers. We also have it for the Police Inquiry Department, and we'd like to present this now on behalf of the Historical Society, the new flag to, we'd like to take a word.
Sure.
Who's getting?
Give it to you.
I'll just put it back here for safekeeping.
Actually, I'm gonna pass it down, and I've got a bag.
It should put it in his backpack.
I know where to point you.
You can put it up and take it down every night at Mount Hill Park.
There we go. All right. So. We will now move on to our consent agenda.
Moves to approve as presented.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we'll be sitting as the Board of License Commissions. Tonight we have one item, say, a licensed new food establishment, Drift Cafe, one ninety Thane Street, Newport.
Moves to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Motion to adjourn as the Board of License Commissions.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have minutes from our January eighth, twenty twenty four meeting.
Moves to approve as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we'll be moving on to the town administrative board.
Evening, Mr. President, Town Council, ladies and gentlemen. The police department is scheduled to welcome a comfort dog as a new member of its department on Wednesday, January twenty fourth. This dog is being gifted by the New York organization Puppies Behind Bars. Puppies Behind Bars is an organization in New York which trains incarcerated individuals to raise service dogs for wounded war veterans and first responders. Officer Wesley Lamar, the school resource officer for the middle school and both elementary schools, has been training in New York for the last two weeks with the comfort dog. The dog is an approximately one-year-old puppy who will be assigned to Officer Lamar and used primarily as a comfort dog in Portsmouth schools. A comfort dog's presence in the schools has been shown to enhance positive relationships between the police and the school community. The dog will also be available for situations outside of the schools to provide connections with residents, as well as reduce anxiety and increase communication with victims and witnesses. The comfort dog program will be funded completely through community donations. With regard to transfer station sticker sales, this is just a reminder that all users of the Headley Street Transfer Station will be required to present the new eighteen-month sticker starting Thursday, February first. Town Hall will be open for sticker sales only on Saturday, February third, from eight AM to four PM to help those who haven't been able to do so yet. Rescheduling the EFSB public comment hearing regarding the LNG vaporization project on Old Mill Lane. That will happen, that has to be rescheduled as the sighting board was informed by Rhode Island Energy that the company did not provide the required notice to abutters to the project that there would be a public comment hearing on the twenty fourth. Similarly, the company did not provide the required notice to abutters for the evidentiary hearings within the statutory mandated timeframe. As a consequence, the board has canceled both the public comment hearing this coming Wednesday and the evidentiary hearing scheduled for February twelfth, fourteenth, and twenty second. The public comment hearing and the evidentiary hearings will be rescheduled on dates to be determined. With regard to the short-term rental ordinance, the planning staff, together with staff from the fire department, the clerk's office, and legal counsel have been meeting to discuss ways to strengthen, clarify, and improve upon the existing short-term rental ordinance. The town council made this a priority last October, particularly after hearing from residents who feel that they have been negatively affected by short-term rentals in the denser neighborhoods such as Island Park. We will be prepared to review our proposed modifications to the existing ordinance for discussion only at the February twelfth Town Council meeting. Now, the town planner will discuss housekeeping and clarification issues specific to the ordinance, as well as zoning aspects, enforcement, fines, and prohibitions. The fire chief will focus on the fire code and appropriate occupancy classifications. Should the council request to move forward with the modifications, we will then ask for a public hearing. With regard to the East Main Road paving update, project. On January tenth, I received a letter from Rhode Island DOT, Department of Transportation, informing me that the department had decided to not move forward with the construction of the Portsmouth portion of the East Main Road pavement improvements, including the designed roundabout, and that no determination had been made when the project would again be included in the State Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP. I immediately reached out to Ride Dot in an attempt to discern how the decision was made, as there, as there had been no prior communication with the town, the state planning council, or the governor's office. Unfortunately, I received no satisfactory response. A week later, on January seventeenth, I sent a letter to the governor to express concern regarding this issue and asked for his help in fostering a collaborative resolution with Ride Dot regarding the STIP projects planned for East Main Road. On the eighteenth, I received a call from Director LV. He stressed that Ride Dot is committed to repairing and repaving East Main Road in Portsmouth, and the project is not removed from the STIP and acknowledged the concerning and misleading nature of the January tenth letter to Portsmouth, which is in the council's agenda tonight. Ride Dot will conduct the East Main Road project in two phases. They will start with Middletown this coming summer. The Portsmouth portion will follow, likely twelve to eighteen months or so after the start of the Middletown portion. The director's goal is to allow time for current litigation to be resolved and time for further engagement with Portsmouth stakeholders. He affirmed his commitment to continue communication with the town and agreed parties in an effort to come to a consensus on the project. And additionally, with regard to the audit, I received confirmation after posting of the agenda that the auditing firm will be present at the February twelfth Town Council meeting to brief town, the towns' financial statements. And, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Mister. Can you go over the short-term rental? There's a question as to exactly when you'll have the changes.
I cannot hear. Well, they'll be posted with the next agenda. It's just a working product that has been put together by the staff in accordance with the council's direction in October for your discussion and deliberation. And if you so choose, to move forward, then we would start the ordinance revision process, which would require a public hearing.
Thank you.
There's an online question. Okay. All right, on to resignations and appointments. First, we have the Economic Development Committee that you've.
President. It's my pleasure to nominate Mr. Boxall for appointments as we've represented to the.
Second.
We have all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. And next, we have three appointments to the Tax Assessment Board of Review. We have two candidates, Bradley Sinkey and Norbert Kretke.
Moves to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Moving on, new business, first item is our monthly financial report. It's Martin.
Good evening, Mr. President and Office of Counsel. As of the end of December, the town has six months or fifty percent through fiscal year twenty twenty four. Year-to-date general fund revenues were at fifty-three point eight percent of the total budget. Primary sources were town clerk receipts, interest income, and tax receipts. Year-to-date general fund expenditures were at forty-nine point six percent of total budget. Primary drivers were quarterly pension contributions and benefits. At this time, we are projecting to meet the target budget. The FY twenty-five budget cycle is underway, and we have started departmental budget reviews. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Move to approve as presented.
Good thing, Mr. Hamiltons.
Motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, on to new business. First item is the Joint Town Council School Committee's slide, presentation. Mr. Rayner and Dr. Kenworthy.
Yeah, Mr. President, as we stated, as the finance director just stated, we are now in the development of the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty five. This brief will provide some highlights. If you can just go to the next, I'm sorry, I didn't notice it was.
Been having trouble getting connecting to the website as well.
Yeah.
I'm having trouble connecting now. Is why I was just standing there without saying anything.
It's not his turn yet anyways. It's me.
Did you get into the Zoom line?
Yeah.
I can't.
I.
You don't do that. My phone is too early to.
Okay, great. If you just go to the next slide. All right, so this brief will provide some highlights with respect to the budget drivers as we see them. As always, it's revenue, expenditures, capital, and just that next slide, please. We'll start with revenues. I'll speak to the town side, and then Dr. Kenworthy will speak to the school side. On the town side, the governor released his budget proposal last Thursday. Eight of the town is essentially flat relative to last year with a sixteen thousand dollar increase. Tom, Director, I'm sorry, Dr. Kenworthy will speak more regarding school aid here in just a moment. With respect to property taxes, you know, the car tax has been eliminated, but current legislation will provide for the same reimbursements as last year. So in other words, that revenue will be flat. Legislation also provides a fifty thousand dollar tangible tax exemption to all tangible tax accounts. Current legislation provides for reimbursement to the town. We do expect new housing construction to increase due to the development of Prescott Point. Additionally, renovations, additions, and reconstructions are still high and steady, so we do expect an increase in those revenues. We are still seeing favorable interest rates on our deposits, which will result in a significant revenue source next year. And now with respect to the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funds received as part of the ARPA or American Rescue Plan Act have been placed in a special revenue account and are used by council direction in accordance with approved priorities. These funds must be obligated in twenty twenty four and expended no later than the end of twenty twenty six. Dr. Kenworthy?
Thank you, Mr. Rayner. As you know, for the school department, our largest source of revenue comes from county town appropriations. So we are thankful for the collaborative relationship we have to town and generous support that we receive. Our next largest source of revenue would come from CED. As Mr. Rayner indicated last week, Governor McKey released his recommendations for CED in his FY twenty-five budget proposal. In those recommendations for school aid, Portsmouth would right now scandalize about ninety-six thousand dollars. This number is not finalized until the general assembly takes a final vote, which usually occurs in June, but the governor's numbers will be what we would see throughout the rest of this budget process. On the school side, for ARPA COVID funding, we refer to it as ESER. Those funds on the school side are set to expire by September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, so have a little bit of carryover in through the summer. But this will be a factor throughout the rest of our budget development process, as we had a total of about three point eight million dollars over the last few years that we were able to use for different purposes that will no longer be there. And then lastly, on the revenue side for us, one of the ways that we are able to offset reductions in CED, which we have been seeing, is through our out-of-district tuitions. The primary source of these tuitions for us is through our little human and out-of-district enrollment in our PHS career and tech programs. We are projecting a moderate increase in this revenue line.
The next slide, please. So with respect to expenditures, fortunately, the historically high inflation of the last two years has abated, but the dramatic increases in the cost for goods and services have remained high, eroding the town's buying power and the value of our compensation packages. We will continue to work to identify cost savings throughout the entire budget so as to mitigate the effect inflation has had on our expenditures and labor market competitiveness. On the town side, I anticipate we will begin collective bargaining negotiations with the police union towards the end of the calendar year. That contract expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Recent high inflation had a detrimental effect on all expenditures, and we will work diligently to stretch our financial resources as far as possible to the benefit of everyone. Our Achilles heel is currently and will remain retention and staffing. Quite simply, as I stated last year, town, city, and state governments are finding it harder to find and compete and pay for qualified and experienced municipal employees. Quite simply, as I stated last year, town, city, and state governments are finding it harder to find and compete and pay for qualified and experienced municipal employees. This will have to be addressed in future labor negotiations and employee recruitment. Additionally, the safer grant hires, uh, the safer grant expires mid-March, so we will budget the payroll expense for the uh eight firefighters currently covered by the grant for all of fiscal year twenty twenty-five. We are projecting a small increase in healthcare premiums due to favorable utilization trends, and our O P E D pay-go expenses projected to slightly decrease in the next year. We will continue to try and increase the O P E D fund this year to uh decrease liability risks. With respect to the town's defined benefit plan, the actuarially determined contribution will increase next fiscal year. However, the town's MERS contribution to employee uh municipal employee retirement uh uh system. Um, that contribution for police decreases from eight point four one percent to six point six four percent for fiscal year twenty-five, and we'll see a similar decrease for fire from eight point eight one percent to eight point three nine percent for fiscal year twenty-five. With respect to transfer station operations, the contract is due to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Pending the council discussion tonight, we will be prepared to issue an RFP for continued operations later this year. Lastly, we will continue to address our capital plan and budget for as much as possible within our fiscal, our fiscal constraints. Of note, we expect increased utility costs in fiscal year twenty-five and a scheduled increase to our road paving budget. With respect to the road paving program, we will be eligible for the city's road paving grant program, which will make an additional five hundred thousand dollars available in paving funds for the town next year. Dr. Kenworthy.
Thank you. Uh, so uh for the school department, uh, on the expenditure side, our two main unions, Council ninety-four for our non-certified staff and N E A for our teachers. Uh, both have contracts that will run through FY twenty-five, therefore we know and have budget certainty around these salary and benefit numbers. We have not received health insurance premium rates yet on the school side, but are going to anticipate a low single-digit increase unless it's only here otherwise. Uh, we do have some good news uh on both the E S R I pension contribution and the town pension part proportion. Both of those are projected to decrease slightly, driven by changes in state and town pension systems. Uh, one of our biggest contracts is of course for student transportation. This contract uh it uses C P I U for any increases, so you know at the end of the calendar's year, twenty twenty-three C P I U was three point five percent. So that is what we almost forward with uh in this budget process. Special education can be one of the largest expenditure areas for us and can also be one of the hardest to predict, particularly in the areas of one-to-one nursing, out-of-district tuitions. So we're sending students out based on need for special education and statewide transportation. So those numbers sometimes will fluctuate more throughout this process. And lastly, um, right now we know that for both electric and natural gas, rate projections are coming in about fifteen, twenty percent higher. What those current contracts are for. Did you know, Mr. Gioro and Mr. Martin are continually uh to look into these areas for potential savings opportunities.
Next slide please. With respect to expenditures on debt service, we will see a decrease in bond debt service and a decrease in capital lease services next year. Bond debt service will drop a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars and capital lease service for the town will drop seventy thousand dollars. Uh, next slide please. However, uh, as uh outlined in the debt service schedule, uh, the debt service on our bond will rise again the following year, after which debt service will remain fairly stable until the late twenty thirties, barring any new debt issue. Next slide please. With respect to labor contracts and uh uh other programs that we're collaborating with with the the school department, if you remember, uh, we've been able to negotiate five-year contracts with all five of the townside unions. As stated earlier, negotiations with the police will likely start towards the end of the calendar year. However, there is a wage re opener agreement at at the beginning of year four of the P M E A agreement. Uh, so preparation for that will begin also in fiscal year twenty-five. Additionally, we remain very su- we remain very satisfied with our collaboration with the town uh between the town and the school across three very important areas. Facilities management, information technology, and the school resource uh officer program. And we will seek to continue these in the next fiscal year. Next slide. So with respect to capital, uh, I've listed here, and I realize it's an eye chart, we'll just summarize this. Uh, these are the capital improvement projects that have been requested to start or continue uh through next year. Due to reasons previously highlighted, I anticipate this list will have to be reprioritized and pared down prior to the final proposal to the council. Of note, we will try to factor in the increase to our road paving budget in order to take advantage of the state grant program. We will continue the fleet replacement and building improvements uh program. We will continue improvements at Glen Farm. We will uh continue the public safety self-funded capital plan. Uh, we will continue projects to address recreation needs. We will continue to pursue the overall of the town website. And we will continue to apply funding to facility, our facility condition assessment priorities as able. Next slide please. Dr. Kenworthy.
And so for the uh school side for capital, of course, we are still in the midst of uh our our bond projects from the twenty twenty-one bond. So uh for FY twenty-five, we'll be entering year three of those projects. And over mainly over the course of a summer in twenty twenty-four, we will see the completion of two sets or the or a second set of bathrooms and classroom HVAC upgrades at Melville, and then two sets of bathrooms, classroom HVAC upgrades, and an elevator installation at Hathaway. So it'll be a busy summer at both of our elementary schools for the bond projects. Uh, we have made a pledge to try not to uh request too much additional capital um from the town other than for emergency purposes. However, last year, uh, the council did generously approve uh the creation of a revolving capital fund uh in which we're able to it the housing and reimbursement for non-bonded projects that we receive for capital projects and apply that to the next fiscal year. Uh, so currently, uh, in in this fiscal year, we are working to some of the major projects outside of the bottom work that we're looking to address uh have been the P H S septic system, which um unfortunately we found out needs uh pretty much a complete overhaul. Uh, upgrades to the Hathaway septic system, upgrades to the P M S septic pump house, so it's going to be septic here on the school side and local safety and security upgrades at all of our schools. Uh, so we do anticipate having a list of projects that we will designate for FY twenty-five. Again, uh, for these projects, we would be looking to tap into the um housing aid uh that the town receives for school department capital projects.
So initiatives we hope to continue or pursue include uh better organization of our planning and fire departments, addressing required ordinance revisions and work to rely on a line, correct? Correction, work to align our zoning ordinance to our comprehensive plan. Uh, continued collaboration with Middletown and Newport Planning Departments on island-wide hazard mitigation plans, uh maintaining our focus on document and cybersecurity and the website revision, execution of the Learn three sixty-five R I program with the school department and the Oliver Hazard Perry, possible additional staff, and continued focus on our current initiatives and contractual and recreation obligations. Next slide.
For the school department, uh, heading into the FY twenty-five budgeting process, uh, some of the initiatives we're focused on, I've already mentioned, we will see the expiration of ESER funds as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, we do have um some renovations happening to the P M S Little Theater. So we're we're looking forward to being able to show those off. Um, and we we were able to tap into the capital portion of ESER funds for that. Uh, and then we will be able uh to fund one more year of summer program through ESER funding, so there will be no additional um your need there uh in FY twenty-five budget planning for our summer program. Uh, I'll uh, uh, excuse me, one of our uh largest uh outside grant sources that we're currently managing is a Department of Defense, uh, what had been a five-year, five hundred thousand dollar grant that we're using to help support uh our science curriculum. And this grant is due to expire at the end of FY twenty-five, but we'll have one more year with it. And we are in the process of applying for an additional uh grant uh through D U L. Um, lastly, just wanted to highlight, um, just as uh an example, one of the main curriculum expenses we know we're going to have to plan for, our current K twelve math curriculum is expiring. Uh, so in Rhode Island, currently, curriculum materials for math, science, and D U L A have to meet by guidelines for high-quality curriculum. Um, we really don't have any options around that, so uh we know we need to plan for a multi-year program for uh math, uh, and we're expecting that to cost somewhere around two hundred thousand dollars.
So, Mr. President, the town council, ladies and gentlemen, that uh wraps up uh a high-level brief of what we'll be focused on as we uh develop the budget for fiscal year twenty-five. And uh we're off to the races.
Yes, we are.
Hey, Mr. Rayner, thank Dr. Kenworthy for the initial overview. Um, and we'll. Next item, uh, as requested approval to amend resolution twenty twenty-three S O one dash twenty-three, it's a redemption in fact station of the new states of certain senior citizens.
Mr. President, this is a yearly update that we do for our senior citizens. I have moved through.
Second.
All those in favor.
Hi.
Hi. Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. Uh, next item, uh, business ten three is to put permission to write a letter to the state representatives requesting help in direction with revisiting the purpose of Old Stone Bridge at Enteys Beach.
Good evening, David. What happened? I'm here because, as everyone knows, we've had three very serious storms and the Harbor Commission is extremely concerned. It wasn't a matter of when, it's just a matter of what's going to happen coming up. I have done an extensive survey of all the rights of way in the town enforcement for the Harbor Commission and the Harbor Commission that is requested that I ask you all, could we please revisit writing letters to the state about the purchase of these properties? Without protecting the town enforcement, I feel that it will lose a lot of property and it's going to damage and often that destruction. And that's why I'm here. It has no reflection on your last decision. But now it's now it's become a thing that's very up and sets.
Yeah, yes, yep.
Well, as always, I find myself in total agreement with Chair, um, of the Harbor Commission. I gonna ask the council actually to do a little bit more. And here's a suggestion. After the council's decision not to pursue this further, which I think was entirely justified, but I was not there for. Um, I started doing some research into the history of of the Tacona River Bridge. It was originally a legislative undertaking. And at one point to another in the twenties, it looked like they turned it all over to what was then the Department of Transportation. I believe in this council sends to our representatives a correspondence asking them to put in local legislation to assist us in this re- in this matter. One, it will not impact their limit of legislation that had been imposed upon them by their leadership. It would, I think, allow the legislative council people to get more into the weeds of what actually happened. This is back in the twenties. Um, and where in fact this property ultimately uh landed up, ended up. I can see nothing that looks like a deed in any of the documents I have found. And again, this is all outside of what would be a normal title search. It is all like a legislative. And in the last analysis, I believe that the legislature would be able to allow us to do the inspection, and if we were so inclined, also be able to authorize to take it over if the inspection proved to make it uh worthwhile. Finally, um, I believe the chair is entirely correct. Um, that abutment protects uh a whole swath of property below it, or if you will, above it. Um, and I do not think we have seen the last of the big storms. I think that we need to in fact shore up uh that particular structure to protect all of that which is behind it. And I think I don't entirely always agree with the areas that the Harbor Commission has felt it needed to get its opinion out there on. But this one, I think, is most certainly what the Harbor Commission is set to bring to this council's attention. So I would like to request, and I will mention in the form of a motion, that this council's request of our state legislators that they put in legislation to effectuate the refurbishing, re-establishing, reconstruction of uh particularly this kind of bridge abutment and the possible transfer of that property in the future to the town enforcement.
I'll second that with the correction that it's a stone bridge. Right. I was just gonna say, even at Stonebridge, and yes, uh, I think this is the right way to go. My own concern is that, uh, it is the funding, that the legislature needs to address funding of any repairs because if if we, for example, were to somehow acquire ownership of it, Portsmouth does not readily have the capital funds to do this undertaking. So I'm I'm concerned that ownership alone is not sufficient to address the the needs uh to, as you put it, refurbish or maybe of the Old Stone Bridge, uh.
Let me, let me respond very quickly. Uh, you are entirely correct. Um, but I have discovered quite frankly that in this legislative body and in the body of state, uh, whether it will, we find the means. Um, so I think it's a question of how serious this problem is. But it is a pick and a pull. I'm not suggesting you say we're going to take it over. We ask for them to look into it so that we can make an informed decision. A decision based upon a real analysis of what it is there and what it would need. And I I I do believe quite frankly that this was a state structure. It is something that I think they have in other respects brought out to hold, if you will, and then transferred. That has been the history with the federal government and the state government that if they want to no longer be involved in holding the property. But certainly, if you want to add with due concern for financial obligations to my motion, and you'll vote for it, then I'm right behind your lens.
Yes, yep.
Just couple of comments on that, uh. I think it sounds like Mr. Rayner has an ear, Mr. L B, so I think it's a it's a time for him to uh simultaneously approach him and find out how much this thing's going to cost. Is it, we'll put it back on the table first off. And let's let's hang up with with doing more drilling out on that, um. To find out what we have below the surface out there. That's what seemed to stop it, project dead. Uh, so I think those would be reasonable questions. Uh, also, uh, Council Ovech has raised that this was or is, as far as I know, still a dried-up property. We should be asking them for safety purposes, what they could do for us to uh keep this bridge in its existing condition. Uh, we could have bandied on it four or five years ago, but the width of that bridge is about half of its original installation, and we keep losing. And we keep losing more of it with the storms. Let alone looking at the south face, which needs oiling and lots of other work. So just a couple thoughts. I, I would support this motion.
I will also support the motion. I would ask the, Mr. Ovek, if he could. Amend his motion to also include, uh, the inclusion of sending a request to our federal delegation looking for funding as well.
They feel guilty already having run away from. Uh, Chair Brown's original suggestion, um, to making, as they say, a federal case out of it. Okay, um, and I certainly don't disagree with that correspondence, but I, as, uh, Tomson Lee said. I want to encourage as many contacts as we can have with Director Albe and the D O T. As pleasant as we can make them, but I think that, that bridge may have been burnt. A couple months ago. And so I think so, if we put it in a legislative package. It can be much more collegial sometimes up there. There is an inability of people to look at it. And there may be a genuine way, if you will, to. Come around to a different perspective. D O T, like we, um, is very jealous of its budget. And so they will do whatever they can to protect that. So. I think this might be a more appropriate forum for us to have these conversations and, um. I would like to participate in that if I can. Contact of the federal, uh, the federal delegation, I think, would be very appropriate. Um, and I don't know if I would tie them, but I think we could do it as an addition.
Whatever way we can. I mean, they have been able to utilize federal funding to fix the timbered inside. So there's really no reason why we can't have the federal funding, especially since we already have our hazard mitigation plan. We also have, uh, been set up for resiliency money. We are approved for much of these things. We should be able to get some of that money to help us protect our city. Sorry, small town.
So could we revisit the motion?
Yeah.
Hey, the motion to, um.
What is the motion?
What, what is the motion? Yeah.
Let's just start over again, Jeff.
The motion, the mic, let it right thing and stop people from doing a bad thing.
We need to actually. Read the motion.
Send their mic now that way.
And send copies to all of our friends.
Yeah.
Basically, in summary, it was to, um, put out a letter asking local legislation, um. From the council so that it doesn't interrupt their request for their specific legislation throughout the year. It doesn't cut into their number. Um, for us to, um, revisit the Stone Bridge and Teddy Beach. Um, purchase, allowing us to first investigate and inspect the, uh, bridge. And seeing if we can get money to go ahead with such, uh, endeavors. And also go.
I mean, it's like you're playing the tape recorder there, Jen. I mean, that's exactly what I said. You know, I mean, nicer, but exactly what I said.
Just, um, so because this is gonna go to, it's gonna find its way to D O T. Um, I'm just gonna, those things from the vote accused on this issue, just out of, um, consistency with. Prior right out feelings. I'm just gonna step aside on that.
There is a motion on the floor, and I believe Mr. Hamilton seconded.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? Motion and, uh, motion passes, uh, six. Uh, to zero with one more.
Thank you. Excuse me, this is who I don't have to wait the room?
Yes. You're off the hook.
Thank you all.
Actually, I look down, you maybe ask the right letters in support of the legislation.
Okay.
Okay, and maybe even have some of the minions come up there and, and they save our Taconic Bridge. Now they're all here right now. They're willing to stay.
Stone Bridge, Stone Bridge, Stone Bridge, but we knew what you meant, right?
Okay. Let's, uh, move on to a new business, uh, number four. It's Robert's, the current R F P pertaining to the operation. Experience for station. Always drop off diversion items include an option for bids to keep the transfer station. Open in its entirety as currently operating. The R F P shall include bids which they use as sound trash bagging without. And also requests, uh, discussion and review of the R F P to be held on committee.
May I make a point of order?
It is so lovely to see you all again. Um, I am making a point of order and as. Uh, many of you folks are probably familiar with Robert's rules. Some of you may not be, so I'm just gonna say what it is. Robert's rules, this body operates under two requirements. One is the open meeting floor. And the second is the own rules that we impose on ourselves for Robert's rules for the procedure that we're supposed to follow. Um, it has been. My experience that and the, the chair is very, very able and does a very good job in the normal course of our meetings. However, it has come to my attention, or I believe, that when we have a larger gathering. Um, it can sometimes get a little hectic and it can get, um, a little long. If you look around, there are probably a hundred and fifty, two hundred people here. If each of you decided you wanted to speak for one or two minutes, you can see how long that might go on. And you can also get a sense that it really isn't there to us or to you that it happens. So in the near future, as a regulatory of this body, I am going to propose, not for tonight. That we actually establish that in the larger meetings, that is, if we go over a hundred. That we're gonna establish a procedure by which we have people sign in to speak. With the understanding that the comments will be limited to, and this is all quite frankly, up to the council when we decide on it. One minute or two minutes. And that. At the end of that one minute or two minutes, the person will be asked to sum up or to finish. I also just wanna make one other point of order. It is not the chair's obligation really to control the people at the microphone. Or to control the members of this council. The chair rules if one of us says somebody is out of order. And then the chair is obliged to say, yes, the person is out of order, or no, I'm gonna allow it to continue. So for those of us here or there who have said, well, he should be doing this or doing that. That's not his role. His role is to run the meeting. It is our role to interrupt if we feel something's out of order. And I will say finally, if I say something is out of order. I would be doing it as I believe my colleagues would for two reasons. One is you're violating the open meeting law. Which in fact can have repercussions for the community. Or two, you're violating the Robert's rules of order or the rules that we impose. Each of which I think would be unfair to all of you here and to this council if we continued with. So again, the point of order is that shortly in the future, and if you want to, you can keep your eyes out for it. I will be proposing a manner in which I hope will. More fairly conduct these meetings so everybody has a chance to talk. But that we are not here at ten thirty, eleven o'clock. And that's my point of order, Mr. President. Mr. Chairman, whoever you are.
And thank you, Mr. Leback.
That's fine, that item, it is.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Well, it's, I think it was just, uh. I think it was just set the table, which, um, I had, thank you for, for that, Mr. Leback. I. Um, I did wanna say a few things, but I wanted to, um, I wanted to give, give Mr. Gleason his opportunity to. Uh, present this, um, item so that we knew we're working to develop it. So, but thank you for the clarification and on the point of order. Um, and I. We'll move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this was, this was not really a comment that I was planning to make, but I will make it. Prior to getting on the council and at the, uh. At the end of the last, the second bid for, uh, transfer station slash curb side pickup. Bid is for that in October of twenty two, um, that council. Their procedure was two minutes to speak and I, I distinctly remember being at the podium. And trying to squeeze in ten minutes worth of talk in two minutes. And to me, I wanna thank you, uh, President Aggyar for the. For the way that you have treated this, uh, you know, the citizens, of course, is allowing them to speak. If, if in fact it's going over two minutes, it's ten minutes, it's five minutes. So thank you very much for that. Folks, uh, thank you for coming out again. This is trial number three. Um, thank you for your patience. Before I turn this over to the rightful originators of this agenda request, which is eight citizens, so co-co-sign this request. I would like to comment, these folks were left wondering if and when it would be heard. By this council since it was submitted to the town clerk last October. As you recall, a full house in November led to a second meeting the following week that was dominated by the discussion of the roundabout. And I asked us to drop the discussion until January. So we are here tonight to make a decision for or against. Adding the option for obtaining pricing in the R F P to quote, to keep the transfer station open in its entirety as. As currently operating. I believe that we will be able to reach a vote this evening, but I wanted to emphasize that every, every citizen of Portland should be afforded. The opportunity to raise issues and concerns and ideas before this town council. Although my name is on this request, I am just really the sponsor. I do believe in America's request, and I think this group should be proud to have obtained so many signatures on their petition. Would that, would you turn that over to Mary Gleason?
I, well, I think you'd need to ask this.
Well, first we would need a. But what? I'm sorry, what?
You don't necessarily need a motion.
For what?
For we're gonna take public comment.
Well, I mean, are, I mean, are we taking public comment?
Essentially, you gotta accept, accept the petition that's handed in.
I have.
Here for the eight people that presented it.
I have a petition here.
I, I'm, no, I'm aware of it. I'm aware of the petition. I mean, I have a, I mean, I have a, my own, uh, personal thing on. Accepting a petition, um, as matter of record. I mean, in my opinion. Um, we have no way to validate or verify anything on the petition.
You can validate and verify.
I need to, let me finish. Let me finish.
Go right ahead.
Um, you know, it's, it's, we're, you're asking us to accept a petition and I, and I understand why you're doing it. But we also have no, no way to validate anything. I mean, we can accept it, but I don't necessarily think it should be. Considered that this is, you know, part of the record because again, we have no way to validate anything.
Okay, can I say something before you continue? You do have plenty of ways to validate. I don't wish to stand here and waste anybody's time to go over that with you tonight. You can do it if you choose to do it. I don't feel like I need to explain that to you.
What I'm saying is, as a counselor, in a council chain, in a council setting, we have no way. Before I can deny it, validate it.
You can ask the.
We can accept it. Not gonna do that. We can accept it as part of the, the record, but it's, it's not, it, I don't, I don't consider it official, like. If you wanna submit to, you wanna submit it as, as part of your information, it's part of the backup, that's fine, but. I am not accepting it as an official, um, verification. I, I'm not. And it's in the backup, it's there, it's fine, but I'm not going to sit here and say we can accept it because it hasn't been validated. So that's my point.
So I'm going to pass the, um, petitions to the town clerk's office. And I'm gonna explain to you folks that I am submitting it to the town council if you refuse. Or if you wanna say it's not legit, or there's no way to validate, you can say whatever you want, but. Maybe future councils will say, you know what? I think Miss Aggya has a good point. So I'm going to direct the town hall to validate all the signatures, all the addresses. Well, somebody could do that in the future if they wanted to, but it's totally up to them. I don't really think it's necessary tonight. I really wanna just move on to with this meeting. We've been here three times. So, here's the petition. Twelve hundred and seventy six names. It's really a statement. This is a state.
Actually, you've given.
Already have it.
And they're on file.
Already have it.
No, actually, I only gave you twelve hundred, so I'm adding more, okay? Thank you for taking them.
Thousand signature on that?
Yeah, twelve hundred.
Twelve, okay.
Wait, I'm sorry. Twelve hun-. One thousand two hundred and seventy.
And how many people?
There are twenty four hundred. Twenty three hundred.
So are they actually each coming up with a new point? Or is it just one hundred, one thousand, two hundred people, like these folks, so many of them, just saying this is what we want you to do?
The signatures, that petition signatures, okay?
What's that?
That, signatures on petition. Saying that they would like the transfer station to continue as is. If you take your time to read one, although I know you're not.
Ms. Gleason, you said to us the last time you were here. Actually, you don't get to do a point of order. I do. And quite frankly, point of order, your comments are totally out of line. But I don't care. I know there's twelve hundred people out there that you have managed to get on a petition.
I got it.
Congratulations.
So I would like to continue if I can.
You may, you may proceed.
All right. Let's, let's all be nice nights, okay? I'm here to be nice. You guys be nice to me and we'll continue on. The reason for the petition was to at some point come before you and say, hey. I have over twelve hundred signatures, people that want to continue the transfer station. Whether it's legit or you don't wanna accept it, it's just a statement and they're all real. I basically was there at every single collection. I saw everybody's sticker on their car. Don't get out of the car on a street. They signed, okay? Let's move on. Just give you a little bit of time, a little bit of history. First of all, I would like to thank Dave Gleason for sponsoring this on the agenda. All right? This is, this agenda item is at the request of, um, eight citizens. He's right. Together we have a team, they are here tonight. Most of them are here tonight. There are over twelve hundred petition signatures and there are twenty three hundred transfer stations. And also other residents in the community that don't even use the transfer station, also sorry. They felt that it was necessary to continue to operate a facility just like it's operating now. Even though they might not be even using it at the present time, they might need to use it in the future. At the October twenty third, two thousand twenty three town council meeting here at the high school. Over four hundred residents attended in favor of an option to keep the transfer station as it currently operates. The waste disposal, recycling, yard waste, diversion items. But that option, as you know, as you recall, was now on the agenda at the time to vote on. There was a high turnout. A number of people that spoke that evening, uh, a group of us gathered together afterwards and said, hey. Maybe we should think about how we can honor the request of so many people that got up that night that, hey, we want an option three. So in early November, I put an agenda request together, uh, for the November thirteenth meeting. This is November thirteenth, two thousand twenty three. To the council president and town clerk, for the council to consider an option three. Along with, uh, at that time, twelve hundred signatures with a petition. Though that was filed electronically to the request. Thank you for that. Three days later, I received an email from the town hall stating that the request for option three is under. Review for consideration. What does that mean? It's not going to be on the November thirteenth council agenda. And I didn't get any further explanation. About a week later, I received word from anonymous tip. That the council had no plans to place the agenda item on, on the next meeting, which was November twenty seventh. Hmm. I went to Mr. Gleason and I said. I don't know what's going on up there, but, you know, we've been turned down before. We're down in another matter. Other times. I don't know if you remember. But, so, with that conversation with Dave, he said, all right, I will contact the town clerk. He did. And he said, with this agenda request. If the agenda, agenda request we got in the transfer station is not going to make the November twenty seventh meeting agenda. Then place it under his name as sponsoring the agenda request. I didn't have a real issue with that, but that's what happened. Uh, so. Council. It was on November twenty third meeting and that was the night that we went to the town hall. For the meeting, but the roundabout was on the agenda as well. And there was about a hundred and twenty people in the room. And the council decided they had to pull the meeting because it was too many people in the room. And as you recall. Mr. Hamilton moved to. Have a meeting on November thirtieth, just three days later. Because there was an issue with Peter Albe. So, we ended up here. To get it back to that October twenty third meeting with discussion of option one and two at the time. The outcome of the council voting for option two, which is essentially closing the transfer station. For waste disposal and recycling. I'd like to clarify. That some councillors stated more than once that evening, they were not going to close the transfer station, or they had no intentions of closing the transfer station. However. There was some confusion with some folks in the audience because after they left that night. We heard people out in the foyer, oh, it's okay, it's okay with option two because. I'll still be able to take my trash to the transfer station, but only on two days a week. I can live with that. I'm like, whoa, whoa, wait a minute. This needs to be noted. I don't want there's any more confusion from the audience, people out in the town. And that's not the case according to option two.
President, point of order.
Um, that they, that they voted on that night of October twenty third. Also, option two.
What, what's the point of order?
We are now five minutes into what I believe is you reading to us. Something that actually almost all of us were there for. And we're, we're not even out of. Twenty twenty three yet.
Because I was trying to make sure we clarify what people believe that happened on October twenty.
Look, if you want to, if you want to publish a, you can publish a post, but don't sit there and reading and you don't make your remark.
Mr. Lebeck.
You do make remarks, Karen, you know you do.
So, let her go. Here's, I just want to stop you for one minute, Mr. Gleason. Well, here's the thing. On, on October twenty third, the council voted and took act, the council voted. To move forward with option one and option two. Who, well, option one and two, right? So, because option, part of it was to issue a, a, a townwide RFP. For curbside collection and option two was to continue with operation of the transfer station on. No, I'm not. Yeah, no, but I'm gonna, I'm saying it in two minutes. Option two was to limited, limited use of the transfer station, which was what the council voted on, okay? That's what the council voted on. So, it was voted on and approved. So, then the issue is moot because the councils took action. Your request, your request was to come back and revisit something, but the council had already taken action and voted. So, there really was nothing to revisit unless a councillor brought it back up.
No, Mr. Agby, I think you missed my point. I want to make sure the audience members understood that what option two meant. So, we're, so I think I made my point. I think we need to move forward.
We do need to move forward, but.
So, I'm not gonna go, I'm gonna talk about the transfer station.
Yeah, let's, let's get to your point.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
You know, that's a thought have them.
I'm okay with this.
I recognize that I have them. I'm good at it.
I'm okay with it. I'm okay with it.
So, we're still talking about this motion.
Yeah, I would like to get to that, to that point. Yes, there's no motion yet.
I just want to remind everybody that we heard what a lot of people have said and I just want to remind people. And some folks like the transfer station because it's the lowest, lower cost option, it has been. And then. We don't want any extra fees to get rid of diversion items if we had a different option. I won't mention the name. A lot of items such as broken refrigerators, old microwave, metal used oil, mattresses. So, I'm talking about all the great things.
Get back to your agenda item, please.
I, I really try and desperately try. We also heard from folks who feel like the transfer station is a very good option. We recycle their used books and use clothing. Transfer station uses a very proud seat on recycling rate, though. As you are all aware, that we wanted the highest in the state of Rhode Island, we're averaging about thirty five percent. A goal of fifty percent. We want to keep, keep that going. The benefits of having this transfer station continue in the near future. People need to continue having. They would like to dispose their spring, their fall cleaning of their garages, their basement, their attic, et cetera. God forbid we have a terrible fire or an extreme weather condition where we all need, where we would need to have a well-run transfer station. To dispose of debris. Yes, especially heard, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna repeat this, but it's true. That having a transfer station, having the great men that we have that work there, Pauline, John, the two gate guards. They do a very good job. They're well organized. They cleaned up that station remarkably. They deserve a lot of credit. So, basically, on behalf of our team of eight people that we finally had a chance to talk. We would like for the motion to include. Running a bid to go out, solicit bids. To, so that vendors can. Send in bids to continue to run or run. Transfer station. With bags or without bags. Now, you should say it, and without bags. And current as, it is currently run, operated in its entirety, as it is today. That's from me. I do have a short statement from another resident. Who started the team that could not be here tonight. Thank you for your patience. So, this is from Dave Reeves, sixty six Bayonne Street. The duties of the elected council members are to be a good steward of the people's money and to vote in a manner that reflects the majority. We got on the topic of continuing to operate a transfer station in its current form. We have two, we've had had two open large meetings. Both of these meetings reflected the majority will of the people to maintain the transfer station. Opponents to the transfer station were few. Though it has the same opportunity to be heard. This indicates by statistics that retention of the transfer station is what the majority of the townspeople want. The people on both sides of the issue spoke and the overwhelming majority has that town council retained this transfer station. Stewardship of our money is another concern. Curbside has been presenting as being a more cost effective alternative. You will know, you will not know this unless all methods are bid. You do not and cannot know what the transfer station bid would be unless you put out a bid for it. As an engineer, and we have engineers on the town council, you need calculations and data to build a project. One would not use old data from another bridge to build a new bridge. A bid to a new transfer station could be turned. That is a low-ball bid purposely low to allow a vendor to enter our area of the market. You do not know. In all cases, the change in typical fees is the constant for all vendors. Quote, to quote former President Kennedy's. The rising tide floats all boats. All vendors would see a rise in typical fees. This decision also does not just hinge upon money. The comments at public meetings indicated that the transfer station is more convenient. Because you can take trash out as needed, pay less if you throw out less. And have more options for recycling, yard waste, bucket waste and other diversion items, which are included in the price rule. The choice of the townspeople is first. I'm sorry, the choice of the townspeople is first and the price is secondary. Given that those who use it will pay for it anyway. And, and not at an extra cost to the town. It also should be noted that there was a large surplus in the transfer station budget. Which should have reduced this year's picker cost. Where's this money now? Please do not rule against the will of the people. Again, Dave, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
Thank you, Mrs. President, for recognizing me, to the floor. Just a couple of points before I get into what my, I'm going to make a motion. And I hope everyone who's worked hard on all this. First, on the point of petitions and whether it's official or non-official, accepted, rejected. The, the town charter only has one provision in it, well, two, if you thought the budget. Here, system, but this is not about the budget. Has only one provision about petitions. It has to do with getting ordinances. Heard by the council and requires twenty percent of registered voters. To sign it, which, although twelve hundred is a lot, is not twenty percent of registered voters. That said, I look at the petition as an exercise of free speech. It is people in the town. Making their thoughts known to the council and I appreciate. People weighing in. As to whether or not. That petition or folks in this room represent a majority of people saying they want the transfer station open. As evidenced by the literal majority of Portsmouth residents who do not have. Transfer station stickers. It's not the majority. That's neither here nor there. The question is not, we only do what a majority wants. Because. A majority of residents in town may not have kids in the schools, but we still run a school system. So, we, we do things all the time. To address the needs of the residents of Portsmouth. Whether they are a majority, a minority, a mixture of all kinds of things. We have repeatedly said, nearly everyone on this council has repeatedly said with the current RFP, the curbside pickup RFP. That the council is doing no more. Than seeking information of the cost of curbside pickup and then the council is not taking any action to close the transfer station. We have repeatedly said. The council is not taking any action to close the transfer station. We have repeatedly said that the council is not taking any action to close the transfer station. We have repeatedly said that the council is not taking any action. To close the transfer station. Should I go one more?
No, no. That's good.
No, I'm gonna yell, point of order.
He's asking for two more. And, and yet, folks, choose not to believe.
They're not going to.
That said. The idea, the proposal for the motion before is not. Quite well thought out because. Like the least that's put on the agenda, it asks to add an option to the current RFP. But that current RFP is for curbside pickup. If we add an option. Well, this is what's on our agenda. This is the wording on the agenda. If we add an option, that means. Companies can't bid on operating the transfer station other than by responding to the current RFP for curbside pickup. And optionally, they could choose to also include. A, a proposal for operating the transfer station in its current form. And I think that would reduce the number of companies we might get to bid on it. A company may want to bid on only curbside, or they may want to bid on only the transfer station. But you can't bid on only the transfer station, given the wording of the proposed option front of us. I believe that the town should run. Of course, we don't know, curbside pickup, when we get these bids, might be cost prohibitive and we won't go forward with it. But I believe that if responsive bids are made on curbside pickup and transfer station, that we should run them both. Each as its own enterprise fund. You can buy a transfer station sticker, you can buy a curbside pickup service. I don't know if we'll go with stickers or other, well, we'll have barrels. I think it's a pretty large sticker. Or both, if that's what you choose to purchase. But then it shouldn't be added to the current RFP. It should be its own separate RFP. And since the curbside pickup RFP is already designed and standard set. I make a motion to direct the town administration to issue a RFP to operate the transfer station in its entirety with all its current services. That's my idea. But you'd like to know just one little more piece about why I made that motion? It's because we have repeatedly said. That the council is not taking any action to close the transfer station.
Mr. Katzen, I'd like to second that motion for this motion, please. I think the previous bits showed there were places that. The companies could pick and choose what they want to bid on. Rather than split here for that, I think. You come up with a happy medium that would give us a number that we need to make a decision in the future. And that would satisfy all the citizens of Portsmouth. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Doctor. Thanks for the comments. I just wanted to, for my own purposes, I guess, clarify what we're discussing here. Trash removal is a municipal service. It's a matter of public health and safety. Almost every municipality in this country arranges for. Municipal wide trash removal. Portsmouth does not. We have one town-sponsored mechanism to do this, the transfer station. Which is only available to less than a third of the town residents. Everyone else in the town is left to their own devices. So, we're leaving, we're providing a service that can only be utilized by a minority of the people in the town. Which I see the shrug, sir, but it is unfair to the other people in the town. If we try to. Issue an RFP for townwide curbside, the idea is to get the lowest price possible for the service. It may be that carving up sections of the town because the transfer station. Will result in a less favorable price. I don't know. But. It's, I can't predict that. It's a reasonable thing to do if people are that. Enthralled with going to the transfer station, then I certainly second Mr. Katzen's motion that we. Offer that as a separate enterprise fund in the town. We'll see how it works out. I mean, there's just, there's no way to predict the future, but. Again, I just want to say what the town council has been trying to do is to try to figure out. The most cost-efficient way of providing a service that every municipality supplies to its citizens. And that's really all that we're doing. Everybody has their own opinion about the transfer station. I used to use it. I switched to curbside because the time was much too inconvenient. I only time I could go was Saturday morning. When I was invariably in a line with other people waiting to get in. But that's just my subjective individual experience. It has no relevance to anybody else. But there are a lot of people in the town who don't use the transfer station. Again, as I said, most of them because they cannot use the transfer station. But many towns because they just don't find it's going to be a way to dispose of trash. But there are a lot of people who do, and I think Mr. Katzen's motion is reasonable, so let's go forward with it.
Yeah. What now is town halls?
So, I would add something of a misapprehension tonight. Because my resolution, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gleason. Is that we had left it with the request from the administrator to go out and get a request proposal to see what curbside would look. And in the meantime, we were going to continue on with the transfer station as it is. Some of you probably know, you were bought a year and a half transfer station. It is highly unlikely that in the next year, we're going to close this transfer station. Because we're selling you tickets to go in. And we don't refund money. You all know. You all know that. Okay. Now, let me just tell you why I'm going to vote against this, because it wasn't supposed to be here as far as I'm concerned. I was, I was, I had a misapprehension when I saw it. I said, oh, maybe we got the request for proposal back. Maybe we now know what the dollar amount was. That's what we were waiting on. Okay, but that's not. We are here because some folks think that we should continue this conversation. And we all, I mean, the Celtics are playing tonight, for God's sake. Anyway. I got one other thing I really want to quickly say. I have a vision of us doing curbside, which includes that facility being used for composting and for getting rid of yard race and getting rid of other things, a more holistic approach. To, uh, now, I can't tell you that's a promise from me because I don't know if my colleagues have any interest in that. I would like to see us doing a little bombing operation that, you know, people could have their own lots and grow some vegetables if they don't have the land themselves and use them compost.
Order. Order, just a little civil.
Say your, say your point.
Okay, so in any event, I'm voting against anything that comes up tonight because I think it's out of order.
Any, any further questions, Tom?
What, you don't like composting?
Do you want to say anything else?
Uh, yeah, I do.
Call the guy, be tied to it with the other.
But she wants to speak, and she speaks.
The council is speaking.
Um, I think you've kind of beat it a little bit. Um, I've said this before, and I think the, the issue here is not whether putting out a separate RFP or running a separate enterprise fund for the transfer station is a bad idea. I know, and so I think it is. Um, I just think doing this is very bad uh, approach to municipal bidding. Um, I've been in public projects many, many times. And putting out contradictory RFPs or even planning to put out contradictory RFPs is shooting ourselves in the foot and very, very bad strategy. So I am voting against it and go sticking to what I said months ago, is that there is a purpose and a reason why we propose to do this this way. So we can put out an RFP for curbside pickup so that we can understand and analyze what our options are. Um, trying to do this at the same time is just a really bad idea and is not going to paint a clear picture of what our options really are. Like we've said many, many times, we still have a year and a half left in the transfer station contract. The goal of the curbside pickup RFP is to gather information so we can make a educated decision as to how to proceed. It might turn out that we proceed with just another, we cancel out our fee, don't award it, and then do another RFP for the transfer station. The, the point is that we can't do them both now because it is for the same reasons I already said fifty times before at various different meetings. Um, so I, I think I admire your intent behind this. I understand what you're trying to do in terms of appeasing everyone. I just think it's a really bad approach.
Can I make a comment to that? Sure. I just want to thank you, Mr. President, and I just want to thank Councilmember Abbott for her thoughts. And I do not, I do not disagree with her. To a certain extent, the motion I made tonight is stupid. But it is what I believe is necessary in order to provide a, 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 an approach that will satisfy the most people in town. Maybe some not as well as we could, but it's always a balance of interests and so that is why I made it. But I just want Councilmember Abbott to know that I don't disagree with her remarks at all.
Okay, all right. Um, I, I do want to just say a few things. Just let me, let me say a few things. I, I think, um, there's been a lot of discussion on this, a lot of, a lot of misinformation. And I think to recap a few things, our intent is, is, it was obviously, we have a current contract with the transfer station for another eighteen months. That, that, that's going to go on through, through twenty twenty-five. Our, our goal was to see if we could issue an RFP for curbside townwide and see if we could get a better price by consolidating from maybe four vendors down to one. That, that was, the intent was to see if we could get a better price for the folks using curbside. In my mind, I, I'm a transfer station person. I, I think those of you who know me and have been around for a few years know that I've supported the transfer station. Um, and, and so going forward, the reality is that the transfer station, some of you don't want to hear, it's functionally obsolete. When we say functionally obsolete, you mean it's too small to service the entire town. It works well if you have a few thousand users, so it works well for the folks that are using it. I'm okay with going with two RFPs. I'm okay with trying to run two enterprise funds. So that brings up a great point. Why wouldn't we issue an RFP right now for the transfer station for services to begin in twenty twenty-five for three years? I, I think the timing of it is off. I, I'm, I'm, I'm all about supporting the RFP and issuing an RFP, but we don't need to do it right now. We can push that RFP off because we already have a transfer station under control for twenty twenty-five. Why would a vendor give us a price in the next three or four months for services that are not needed until July of twenty twenty-five? So if you, if you believe that we're in it to do what's best for the town, what we're trying to do is, I believe, if the votes are there, how this goes, two enterprise funds. And we don't even know about the curbside because we don't know what the prices are going to be. We have a pretty good idea of what the prices for the transfer station are going to be because we bid the thing every three years.
Right.
So I think we have a pretty good indication of what the transfer station costs on. For those of you that are paying curbside and you're paying somewhere between, I don't know, seven, eight hundred dollars a year, a thousand dollars a year. If that could come down to five hundred dollars a year for curbside, I think that's a win. I think it's a win for, for everybody who's using curbside and a win for those that are using the transfer station. Because you still get the best of what you want. Two enterprise funds. I support it, but I support issuing an RFP later on. That, that's, that's what I would like to see. So, um, I, is there any further discussion from counselors? I know that there was another person who wanted to speak, and, but I wish one of these counselors have had their, their say.
I understand your point. Do you, if this council is going to say that we're going to issue a second RFP for the transfer station and tell them that we're going to follow up on that in September or whatever it may be, that would be fine by me. Question is, um, well, what has been raised here is people have decided to go away from the transfer station. Uh, first, when we employ the pay as you throw banks. But it's always been a choice, people are either using the transfer station, that's been their choice. People are using curbside, that's been their choice. I don't want to say that because this third are using curbside that they're being analyzed. They just made the choice not to use the option that's available to them now. This new method would please everybody, and I think that's what we're looking for, fair and equitable for all citizens. It's also been said here at this council that nobody wants to run the transfer station. Well, this would be the opportunity to find out whether that's true or false. Nobody comes back with a bid and we're, we're stuck, quote unquote, stuck with curbside. There are other towns in, in Rhode Island that have transfer stations. Is it just Portsmouth? And just fixing with their, with their lifestyle, I guess you ought to call it that, or how their philosophies have worked over the years. So I don't think we should be penalized because we're still using old technology, if you will.
Name and address for the town clerk.
Stacy Patterson, two Brent Room. Um, hopefully this will be sixty seconds. So I, I get that we want to keep it. I know RFPs, I get it. Um, one thing I request, if you go for an RFP, do an RFP for everyone. And then also for people that also do it for a lower amount. So if there's twelve hundred or fifteen hundred or two thousand people that do the transfer station, get an RFP from the people for minus those two thousand people, so that you have your true numbers. So if you go out to get a bid on, hey, if you're going to do curbside for all of our residents, that's going to be a different number than if you do all our residents minus the people that do the transfer station. So that's a recommendation, so you can see true numbers, then you know what you're getting if you're doing analysis. If we did the whole town, what would it be? And if we did it minus two thousand people that want to use the transfer station, what would the cost be? That's a request.
I think, and I could be wrong, but I thought we had that discussion during the initial round of, I know, and I think you and I had a healthy conversation in the lobby.
Right.
Um, we, I think, had numbers in there for curbside, and it was four or five thousand, something along those lines, which clearly wouldn't be because there was seven thousand homes in Portsmouth.
Okay.
So. Yeah, I, I think they've taken that into consideration and just like with the transfer station RFP, they already know about how many users. And it's about weight, it's about how much material gets dumped.
So the other thing to cool jets is a suggestion is once you get your analysis, then have another meeting, and then happy, you know.
Usually, usually your corporate chairman laws, RFPs go out. You can just, we can discuss the framework of an RFP like we're doing. But when the RFP goes out, it's, it's, the, the town issues the RFP. It goes out to the bidders the same day, everybody gets it the same day. The bids come in, the town reviews them, the town makes a recommendation, and then that recommendation is presented in open forum. That's how we've always worked. If, if you're not familiar with how Portsmouth does it, that's how we've been doing it for a very long time.
That's, I just wanted to make sure because I think.
A lot of high energy right now.
The, the RFP was to the haulers. And I assumed that they were going to look at both a single contract for the town and then perhaps add what is currently on the ground, but nonetheless contracted through the town. And that would be a price. And if we found that the transfer station substantially impacted that price, that would be another conversation. The transfer station, even though I know some of you have a different perspective, its primary cost is getting rid of the garbage. That is the cost of dropping it somewhere. There are three people there, the fellow in, in the, in the cabin. I don't know him, nice fellow, but I, I'm not thinking that the guy's making fifty, sixty thousand a year. All right, so basically the cost of the transfer station is the cost of getting rid of the garbage. And we know that now.
Can't take a vote, people still want to talk. This week, oh, name and address. I should, I, I wish I had my bounds.
Nancy Reed, one tenth, air drive. I want to thank, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Catson. I totally support his, uh, his motion to have our own RFP. But I can't help myself. Mr. Levesque's letter to the editor in the.
Because I asked you to speak into the microphone, I cannot hear you otherwise.
I, you know, I'll drop it. Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, between Mr. Levesque's letter to the editor in the Portsmouth Times and now Dr. Ryan's comments on, uh, trash and townwide, I want to give you a little trashy story. Westport, Connecticut is arguably one of the wealthiest small communities in this United States. And I can only speak to Westport since nineteen eighty-four until the present time. Westport has the transfer station. My last sticker costs fifty dollars in two thousand and nine. Almost everyone in Westport has a transfer station to use for all trash, vacation times only, recycling, or whatever they want. Westport resident Paul Newman even had a transfer station sticker. Yet most residents have trash pickup. You notice I didn't say curbside. That very antiquated idea. Westport has an ordinance against the large trash trucks operating in residential neighborhoods. It saves money on road repair and replacement. Westport also has an ordinance against curbside pickup. Why? I would say the trashiness of all those cans and spilled trash all over the streets. Private contractors and small trucks back into your driveway and pick up your trash at your garage or side door. In my case, for twenty-six years, my guy backed up the truck up a three hundred foot driveway with a dark light to the south in all weather conditions. In fact, the son of my guy now picks up the trash at that same address for less than forty dollars for a month in two thousand and twenty-four. How small trucks, fewer employees, much less overhead. Yet several of our counselors are telling me this is antiquated. We need curbside. Curbside provides messy roads, messy trash, and very expensive trash solutions. Thank you, Mr. Catson.
Hi, Steve Moran, three, three, four, Terrence Drive. I'm for the transfer station. My wife and I will use one large orange bag every week or ten days, so it's very affordable for us. But I want to talk about maybe another possible option that I don't know if you've considered. I was looking at the property part of that piece of property. But that was built in nineteen seventy, fifty-four years ago. It's currently assessed at one point two million, which I think it's worth a lot more. It's a zoned light industrial. Have you ever thought to, uh, and the replacement cost of it is about half a million. Have you ever thought to maybe sell that? Because it's prime property for, for commercial and use that money to create a state-of-the-art transfer station here in Portsmouth that's sustainable and, and you'd probably get a lot more people using. I just think that it's, uh, you know, it's antiquated, as you said, but it's worth a lot more money. That location is, is ideal coming off twenty-four. And, uh, I think it'd be, uh, something to look at as seller. Use some money to, to do something that's really, uh, you know, state-of-the-art in Portsmouth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Man.
Oh, I also wanted to mention, I was in Amagansett, Long Island this past summer, and there's about thirty-eight thousand people in that area. They had a transfer station there. No curbside pickup because the streets are so small, they're like beach towns. And, uh, I couldn't believe how well-run it was. And they actually, they make money on hauling trash out of there, you know, the process and everything. So maybe if you look at some of these other transfer stations around the United States that are doing really well and profiting off it, uh, you might get something that you can probably hear.
Thank you, Mr. Man.
Evening. My name is John Davis, I live at three sixty-two West Main Road here in Portsmouth. And I want to start out with some positive, first of all. I want to congratulate the town council since you voted to allow the South Coast Wind Group to bring their cables through Portsmouth. That will now give us over a million dollars a year, according to paper. So that should take care of keeping the transfer station open.
Sir, it doesn't work that way.
It was in the paper.
I, I know.
So I want to go on, I want to go on something else because I'm looking out there and I see your agents.
A what?
And I, I, your agents. I know, I talked. Okay, although I've, I've been here since nineteen seventy, I'm not a newcomer. I'm a veteran, twenty-four years in Navy, disability. And what you're forgetting about all this, folks, is the senior citizens, the likes of ones that live on West Main Road, that live a hundred yards off the road. Can you see me pushing those barrels out even in good weather, let alone the snow? And, you know, I, I, like I said, I've been here in Portsmouth, and I'm going to shut up with this, since nineteen seventy. That's where I married my wife here currently. And I know for a fact that there are a lot of senior citizens here tonight. And so if you live a long enough, we're going to be senior citizens again. And like the lady said, among other things, the trash along West Main Road with those barrels. And like the lady said, among other things, the trash along West Main Road with those barrels, which my, my next-door neighbor has, they're a pain in the butt. And they're a hazard, but the big thing is you're forgetting your constituents. The people that fought in the wars for you, Vietnam, Korea, and now are fighting, that are gonna be veterans, and you're saying, close the transfer station. Thank you.
Good evening, um, my name is Jennifer Abbott, and, um, I'm the person, I wrote one of the letters to the editor, and I just have a couple suggestions. I sent all of you a letter in person because I'm very big on.
I'm sorry, just your address.
Oh, I'm sorry, sixty-one Ferrer Terrace. Um, and I'm really very passionate about recycling, and I do a lot of recycling for St. Philomena School. I bring all their paper stuff up, maybe ten or twelve bags a week, just to help with recycling because I think it's important. But my question is, and I heard some go up earlier, and I know I signed a petition, I thought this petition was valid. But my suggestion to you was why not you put a survey into everybody's tax bill? Now, I know it's not gonna happen till twenty twenty-five, but I'm afraid if we wait too long to get information, this would be an easy way to get everybody in the town to give their input. Or even on the same questionnaire to say, why don't we put this back in our taxes? There's so many other things you could do, and I understand, um, RF, I don't understand RFPs or whatever, but I just think you don't have enough data from what the people in our town really want. And hopefully, it's recycling and helping our community and all that type of thing. But I just think that's an easy way to get more information about what people really want. If you were the, um, uh, I guess you had a survey out there last spring or someplace, which I never knew about, but just to get people's input, what they think is best and how they would use it. And I don't understand why people think they can't use the dump, um, whether it's hard to get here or whatever. But, I mean, everybody has an option to go to the dump and to pay. Why not?
Because only a third of the population can use the dump. It's too small.
It's, it, 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 let's, I think we're gonna get confused here. I, I, I think, I, I understand what you're saying. The, the, the transfer station was built in, I think we heard nineteen seventy, when the town of Portsmouth was a lot smaller. The equipment in there is very old. And so currently, when, when we say it's, it's functionally obsolete, about, many of you who have used the transfer station know, not that long ago, you could wait forty-five minutes in line trying to get through this transfer station. We implemented Paige's Pro that may, I, I think I'm speaking, folks. That improved the efficiencies of the transfer station. Our recycling rates went up. Paige's Pro seemed to be a win-win. What's happened over time is the number of users for the transfer station has, has diminished. And that, that, when costs go up, number of users go down, the transfer station sticker gets a little pricier. Folks that use the transfer station will pay up to, they'll, they'll pay, they will pay up to a certain amount, I believe. But here's what happens. At some point, if the equipment in there breaks, okay, then the town has to bond that money. And that bond goes down to the, to the users as part of the enterprise fund. So it, it's a major expense in your, in your transfer station sticker. Right now, it's about two sixty a year. It was three eighty-five for the year and a half. That, to me, that's reasonable, plus your Paige's Pro backs. But what happened if it's a major expense, one of those motors breaks, and all of a sudden the costs go up significantly? Then you're gonna have to make a decision, is it worth it for me to pay that? Or would I wanna do something else? We're not there, we're not there, but that's the reality of an older transfer station with the equipment. It, it's running, it's working, so, so far, so far, things are good. And it's never a problem until it's a problem, and we'll deal with it. And, you know, we'll deal with it, the users there, if, if it goes forward, it's an enterprise fund. We'll figure out a way to keep it going as long as we can, but it's really based on the number of users. So if you're a diehard transfer station user, recruit some more people to use the transfer station. It's like, you know, I mean, that's, that's what it comes down to, it's a numbers, just sheer numbers. If we can keep it running, we will. And I think we, as counselors, we've, we've tried to do that over the years. If we can keep it running, we will, but those costs do start to creep up. And if the numbers drop, it, it, we don't know. So we will put out another RFP.
Point about even putting it back into the tax base.
That's a separate issue because not everybody uses it.
Well, like Dr. Ryan said, not everybody uses the school system.
Yeah, but it's. We can't just put it back into the tax base. We've looked at some of these numbers. We can't just put it back into the tax base, it's, it's not, it's not possible. Or it's not, it's not that easy.
I would just do as much, if I could, to get as much data from people in this town.
Thank you.
Just some, some background information regarding that. I've been on the council for six years. I think for six years, we discussed the putting the transfer station or whatever trash hauling service we have offer as a town back in the tax base and coming up with a plan to do it, because we can't do it in one year. It's a big chunk of money that we need to work back into the budget eventually. But I think we all have voted and agreed that it should be in the taxes. I'm suggesting we start this now, a year and a half ahead of time, rather than wait till the last minute, right before the end of next year.
We're, we're, there's been a lot of things working against us in the last few years, but, um, we agree that it should be back in the tax base. Um, and, you know, I think you sort of, Agar addressed this, but the, the majority of Portsmouth residents had a vote or respond to a survey with what they choose to do with their trash, which is more than half the people pay for curbside pickup, a substantially higher number than what the transfer station would cost. And I think it's a matter of, um, lifestyle and what people can or cannot do. Um, so I think it's important to respect everybody's, you know, needs and opinions and provide opportunities for all. I was pretty disappointed to see some heads shaking and people booing when, um, Mr. President mentioned that doing an enterprise fund for curbside pickup might provide savings to those of us who use curbside pickup. I don't see how that is a negative thing for our town to have more than half of our residents save money because we provide them with an option of an enterprise fund for curbside pickup. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. So I, I know we have a motion in a second, I, I still wanna let folks see, so.
Kevin Bensy, twenty-seven, seventy-four, East Main Road. What I'm essentially hearing is that the council is going forward in order to find a way to have the majority of people in the town of Portsmouth be able to have access of, to dispose of their garbage. Big question for me is that who is going to pay? If we see, if we have curbside pickup, is it going to be mandatory that every person in the town has to use curbside pickup? Is it going to be that if you have curbside pickup and you wish to dispose of other trash or heavy objects, is there going to be an additional fee now on top of what we as either taxpayers or individuals, uh, paying curbside pickup directly? Uh, is that an additional thing that is going to be put upon us? What I'm asking, those are, at this point, rhetorical questions because you don't know, and we don't know, what those costs are going to be until we go out and put the RFP out there and have responses. And once we do that, I humbly request that it be openly discussed and taken into consideration that everyone in the town should know what is gonna happen or what potentially is going to happen before it just suddenly takes place. And, um, and I, and I say that because I was a little dismayed, uh, earlier. And I'm sorry to go back to some business that's already been voted on, but I didn't have an opportunity to speak on the Teddy's Beach, uh, Stone Bridge proposal, um, which I, I, I feel as though as my, um, as my father would have said when one of us four children came up with an idea that was totally off the wall, he would say, I think you're living in a dream world, young man. And sometimes I was, but, uh, the, the point is, that's a project that is way, way beyond the town of Portsmouth without federal help, I should.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Bensy. But just, just to answer your question about when the bids come back, as I stated earlier, when, when the bids come back, they'll be reviewed by the town, and then there'll be a recommendation for the town. And that recommendation is discussed in, in, in open session. So yes, it would be, you would know. All right.
Hello. Siobhan Thurston, six, six, four, Nanyi Street. I'm a proponent of, um, transfer station. I've been passionate and have spoken every time we met. Um, it is about choice, Dr. Ryan. Um, not everybody uses a transfer station. Great, then you can get your bones. I use the transfer station. Getting RFPs, very important, you'll have to know what you're working with. I would give you the statistics of Milltown, which was pretty much a debacle with the prices going up substantially as we have seen with everything going up. So how can we keep the transfer station and keep everybody, I don't know, that's in your hands? Uh, with twenty-seven hundred people approximately using it? You have to hear why they're using it. Recycling, maybe it's convenience, maybe it's safety for our seniors. Maybe it's, um, I use all the stations, the metal, when I have something broken, it goes. I am confident that my recycling goes to the right place. The fellows there, they're willing to help, but they have never helped me because I'm strong enough to do it myself. I almost say that. I don't wanna been eight hundred to twelve hundred dollars a year. I went and paid three hundred and eighty-five dollars for my eighteen-month transfer station ticket last week. When I went there, there was a clock behind the woman, and she came, and she lost her glasses, so she had to go get her glasses. And I make this a point because my check was ready and my registration was ready. It took ninety-three seconds for her to complete my transaction, including writing my sticker. The reason I bring that up is in October twenty-three, Mr. Levesque wanted soft charges for every single transaction for the transfer station. How much did you want? It's ninety-three second transaction. So I say, I'm going to say that we don't kill something because it's old. It works, we need it. A lot of people have said that. Please hear your constituents. Thank you. I have a quick comment, so. Living around two thousand seventeen, eighteen, the RFP had drawn out before, one came back in. Um, so typically what happens, the RFP goes out, vendors might require a, a request to meeting, or the town puts out a request for meetings, the vendors, they wanna come in and ask questions. So I recall reading that information, did a little research myself. A question was asked by vendor, so is your overall intent to close the transfer station? The answer that was responded was yes.
By what?
By who?
And the other thing.
By who?
Are the other thing.
By who?
I wouldn't even hear Karen.
I'm not taking you with someone back here, we're all upset.
It's, it's, it's.
We're not there, that's.
Thank you.
Wasn't me, it wasn't a vote of the council.
No, I didn't.
Oh, somebody said.
That a vendor?
It's okay.
No, listen, yeah, a vendor, leaving Mr. Katzman, you don't get a chance.
So, so, I, I respect, but you, you know, you drop a bomb, like, oh, there's, there's.
Yes, it is, yes, it is, yes, it is.
Try to set the record straight, but it seems like you got it all back, kind of, in time.
Oh, please.
Not my imagination. So, yeah, that is true. You can ask people that were leading all week, I don't know, it doesn't really matter, I'm just putting that up there. That is a sentiment of.
You're. Hello.
You didn't, you haven't called me?
Yes, it is in the paperwork. It was done by our DTW response, send the questions back to the vendors. Enough to take no cases, it was intended to town to close the transfer station on curbside, it's in, it's documented. I'll get it to anybody that wants to read it.
I would like that.
But I, I would like to say, uh, so we can get out of the vote, Mrs. Gleeks, you asked in your original, uh, agenda item, the request discussion and review of the RFP held in an open meeting. Are you happy with the answer that Mr. Agar gave you, that we would discuss this in an open meeting? Okay, thank you. We proceed to vote, Mr. President.
Very quick, very quick, I have two little points here.
Name is Randy Madsen, four, six, seven, Park Avenue, Portsmouth. Uh, two things I'd like you to consider as you, uh, make this, or, or decision on this. And I know it's a, a waste out, if you're gonna, you know, this whole thing is gonna take place. Uh, but my wife and I do an incredible amount of, uh, environmental cleanup. We're not associated with any entity, we just do it on our own. Uh, to date, I think I have, uh, uh, seventy-four thousand pounds of debris that we have removed from the environment. Uh, recently, if anyone saw on, uh, goal coefficient area, that was my wife and I that had that big line of, uh, debris out there. That took us two months to accumulate, uh, you know, to save up for the, uh, D, DEM I think picked up. But anyway, so, uh, as you consider this, the cost, uh, I know I'm retired and on a limited budget, and I see my, take care of my mother and all that. Uh, and this, if, if it increases, uh, the lower people, they vote, everyone, okay, it's great for the masses, but then the lower end of people are gonna be paying more, then it's not truly fair for those, uh, lower income. I'm just saying that that's part of this process.
I don't, I'm not sure I follow.
Uh, if, if the vote, uh, ends up where the, uh, curbside takes place, you know, the, down the road here, and they do close the transfer station or whatever the, the case be. Uh, it's, uh, ultimately, if it increases the amount of, uh, the cost, you know, versus what is the sticker now, it's two hundred and ten.
It's two, it's about two.
Two sixty-five.
Sixty-five per, per year, plus, plus your bags. Right. So maybe, maybe it's three hundred, three twenty-five a year.
Right, so three hundred for now.
Depending on, on what you use.
On a fixed budget, though, uh, if it goes up now from, say, three hundred, now it's gonna cost a person five hundred, you know, on this, that can't afford it, I'm just saying. Uh, so what I'm relating to with the environment, if we see this more and more, and I know what I'm talking about because I document everything we do, I got it all documented on my, uh, phone here, but, um, we're seeing more roadside, uh, illegal dumping. And that's gonna cost now the town, I know DEM paid for this, and it was, you know, there's eight thousand, uh, pounds, over eight thousand pounds that we picked up. Um, so eventually, we see this, we do it for Portsmouth, and, uh, you know, we do it for the whole island, here and everywhere else, but, um, I'm just saying that we're gonna see more of that environmental, uh, problem. And then the town's gonna end up paying for, the people as a whole, and they're gonna be classic. Okay, so that's all I wanna say on that, is the cost, and then what the cost to the environment is, you know, uh, if it raises, uh, the, the level, uh, where people can't afford it, they're just gonna dump it out the side. When we see it, tires.
It's to the.
I, 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 everything, and, and, so, that's why I just wanted to bring that up.
Understood, and, and those comments have, they, they come up in some previous discussions, and it's something that, you know, DTW sees a spike every now and then, and, and their mattresses or you name it left somewhere, and, and we have to deal with it.
We, my wife and I pulled them out, trust me.
It, it happens, unfortunately.
Albert Pannetti, who would you try?
I tried to stay home this night. I did, you guys have seen me, and I, I tried to stay home, I went on Zoom, I was listening. My wife just said, where are you going? And I was like, I just have to do it. Okay, so, I just wanted to come up here to, to let you guys know my thoughts. Um, what I propose is that we continue to have the, the transportation as it is right now. Understood, perhaps costs go up, et cetera. I get it, everything in my life is going up over the last nineteen years, so I wouldn't expect this to be any different. I get it. Everything in my life has gone up over the last nineteen years, so I wouldn't expect this to be any different. The one thing that I will tell you though is that there is no way that I enjoy filling up the back of my ex floor with the garbage every Saturday. Right, to go to the dump. It's not something that I cherish. I would much rather be doing something else. However, there is a convenience factor. Right, of of the woods or the dump. And my wife is very diligent about recycling, so my recycling gets done. Um and then in many circumstances, especially in the spring, the summer, maybe make two or three trips, right? My concern is, or the reason that I'm against the curbside pickup is perhaps I fill up my barrels and I can't do two trips or three trips. And I'm not the most punctual guy, perhaps. On Tuesday is the day that we pick up where our company picks up. So I didn't get myself put up. Trust me, right? You did all the intimate concerns and and people have brought them up. And you're 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 not alone in your in your um reasons for it or or against it. I mean, if you're what we've found is if you're a transfer station user, you'll go to the map for the transfer station. And and if and if you like the convenience of curbside, you will you will pay for what that curbside offers. All we're trying to do tonight is see if we can move the needle forward, right, with a low to maybe end up with two uh enterprise funds. The transfer station is already an enterprise fund. And it functions and and it's a matter of economics as to how long it it's sustaining itself. We curbside it. Our um if it becomes an enterprise fund, it's solely to try to consolidate from four or five vendors down to one. And maybe there's an economy there. We don't know that until we try to put that out on the street. I'm pretty confident that we could be within a few bucks of what the transfer station is because we've been running it for, I don't know, fifty years. So I I think we have a pretty good track record of of what to expect of the transfer station. So again, I think you're, if you're for it, you're for it. And if you are for curbside, you're for curbside. It's it's okay. Right. Yeah, I just, yeah, no, I just wanted to bring that to you guys because I just think it's important that you listen to us.
We'll tell your wife you were here at ten o'clock if you wanna go grab.
No, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. But I'm gonna try and stay home, but you guys just keep pulling me back down here. Thank you. So we we have a motion.
I just wanted to verify everything was true because everyone's gonna be drafting the RFP. I just want to be sure we're all on the same page. So to clarify, we're gonna go out for an RFP for curbside collection for four thousand residents up to sixty-five, sixty-five hundred residents for the whole entire town. And then come January, uh a separate RFP for the transfer station and early talk race today.
It's, we're not sure the uh January of twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five.
Shouldn't it go before that?
We'll we'll come up with a timeframe, but it would be sometime around December, January. Just what you normally would do.
Yes, because when you get closer towards the expiration of the contract, you get better prices. That's why I make sure. Separate enterprise.
Right, well, we gotta, we gotta see where.
So the motion as originally presented did not have a timeline yet. If we could amend that motion to clarify that the RFP for the transfer station would go out in January twenty twenty-five?
December. Honor of honor of mouth.
Whatever the administration thinks it needs. I don't, I don't wanna say.
December, January, right?
December twenty twenty-four.
It's supposed to go to a next particular year after that.
It would go out for June or earlier. Whatever, whatever the timeframe is for normally bidding.
We we have a consultant.
Yeah, so December, January is a problem. We usually put it out for like two months, especially for a transfer station, so there'll be two months that'll be on the space. It it gives like four months for that to fit their uh.
Whose motion and it is it, can we put it in the motion?
It's my motion, but but if.
You can amend it.
Council would indulge that they said in uh of December of that the RFP would go in December of this year, twenty twenty-four.
Can I just take a motion that uh is an amendment that we delay the uh RFP for the uh transfer stations to a later date to be determined by the solid waste recycling committee and town administrator working with DPW. Rather than put a fine date on it.
I'm sorry, just for my information, when is the RFP for purpose pickup? What's the timeline anticipated to be that is going out?
You authorize it, we're ready to go.
Yeah, that's a different time cycle.
It's given timeline.
But when is it time? Because we haven't authorized it yet. It's being drafted. So what do we anticipate? February, March?
It would go out almost immediately as I need a thought. It it would go out on it would go out almost immediately. The reason we need to, if we're going to consider the curbside uh curbside RFP is that there's a logistics sale that we have to consider. Uh there's a lot of moving parts. One, you have to get people signed up. You have to order the bins. You have to store the bins, distribute the bins, mark the bins, blah, 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 blah. Uh so that's why that RFP needs to go out uh essentially now. The RFP for the continuation of the transfer station, this is something we're very well versed in. Uh we normally put that transfers, that transfer station RFP out about six months before the end of the contract. Uh we let that contract, that that RFP out uh to be evaluated by potential bidders for about two months. We evaluate that, we come to the council, and then there's about four months if there's a change in operators uh for them to switch out the equipment and keep it going seamlessly.
I am confident that the administrator knows among all the stuff we heap upon him and his office how best to marshal his time. That's why we hired him. Okay, so let let him figure out when it will work out best and not try to prioritize. I won't tell you, I won't come here sometime to ask for a priority, but it will, I hope, be a specific item. Secondarily, by the gentleman that spoke about the um taking care of the seniors. Earlier in the meeting, there was a um a motion that was made on a tax-based, a a tax exemption for the elderly based on their income. And it was being increased essentially. We have historically both been aware that there is a significant elderly population that we are trying to keep in their homes and try to facilitate as much as possible assisting them in doing so. So and I I expect, whether it's me or any other of the members of this council, that will be an ongoing obligation that all of them take to heart.
All right.
So it's game still?
Till eight thirty. We got fifteen minutes, Paul.
I understand what's going on. I understand that the the inaction of this council uh is causing the station to be obsolete. In two thousand seventeen, we had, we had a vendor come in that was the lowest speed. He wanted to rearrange the whole station, do all the old stuff. We didn't do it. Second thing is, if you went out today for an RFP, everybody puts escalators in their claws. Don't delay this. I know just, I know what's going on. I know it's gonna screw up the other bit. They're not gonna know which one is going on. But if that's, but if it's the intent of this council to run two separate enterprise funds, then do it. Just do it today. Ask for the escalator, everybody. I mean, we've all been, we've all worked with the government. It's three years later. There's always an escalator in a contract. It's three percent, four percent, pick a number, you know? And then just move forward. Don't, don't push this out to December next year. So, person thirty-two forty-one, you say in the road. Sorry about that one. Any questions online?
We have one.
Let's vote.
Person with a hand up on the line.
What? There's a question on the line. What is it?
Yes, there you go.
One sixty-two Spring Hill Road, Portsmouth.
It's not on.
There we go.
Okay, this is, hi, this is Jody Redlich. Road, Portsmouth, Rhode Island. We can hear you. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Okay, great. I had um two comments, things that I wanted to say. Um number one, and this started earlier, and I take not, don't want to take up too much time. Number one, the twelve hundred signatures that Ms. Ms. Gleason referred to in her document represent about seven percent of the seventeen thousand residents in this town. That's an important point to me. I don't, I don't participate in the transfer station. I personally recycle my waste, including composting. I recycle my books, contributing to the libraries. I donate unwanted clothing and household items to area organizations to make them available to those in need. These are, there are many options for me to address waste removal needs. Yet, since the town council never moved for the transfer station to be closed, the proposed petition is moot. It's, this has been the only thing that's been contributing to the waste in the town. Um I'm, forgive me, I'm sorry. I, I really believe that um if if it would be a far better use of the time that is donated by the professionals that are gathered here because all these members of the town council, you're you're not paid. I mean, you're you're donate, you're volunteering.
Forty-two dollars and thirteen cents every two weeks.
Yeah, and and.
Tell me we're not paid.
It's, well, okay, but the time that is donated. Your time is being donated to the town, and I appreciate it sincerely. And also the hard work of the town administrator and the town staff members. You've all put in a lot of time and effort, and I know that you're smart because you've done tremendous things for the town. So I would rather this time, instead of paying for the extended hours at the Portsmouth High School, I love the high school, but um it would be much more, it would be much better to use all of your time and your expertise to put that into genuine issues that will improve the health, safety and quality of life in town, town for all residents of Portsmouth. I, I really trust and support um the management. And I do not appreciate trust or support the petitioning that has gone on related to this issue or even the wind um issue. But thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it.
Yes, may I just say, uh I just one, one I don't uh that's kind of left open here by by Mr. Rayner. Uh to get the curbside bid out as soon as possible, can we at least put that on the uh next council agenda so that we as a council see what we're putting out on the street?
For curbside? We've already voted.
The actual bid package, the RFP, what what doesn't come out?
I do not want it on the council agenda.
No, that we, we would not review the RFP prior to going out the bid. That's the procurement laws. The RFP.
I thought it was similar to the uh post meeting agreement where we reviewed that.
I'm mistaken. That's my guess. Yeah, no, the typically an RFP is put out through procurement. So we're, we're not gonna, we're not gonna entertain reviewing the RFP. My bad. So it's okay, no problem. Okay. That's right. I have a motion in a second.
Think anybody motion the second, uh the end amendment?
No, I thought we we didn't.
Well, there are two amendments put out. One was to do in December and one was to just give it to the staff to put it out whenever they wanted to. Right, there's no real second to either one. Okay. I I think I'll go back to Mr. Caspian's interest. With the advice from DPW who does these RFPs, that December is a good time. I would second his motion too.
We already have a second.
Thank you. I didn't hear a word you said, chief, but if you're adding five hundred thousand dollars to it, I'm voting against it, okay?
Yeah, we didn't vote. If it wasn't voted against, we would had to five hundred thousand dollars last week, but um so we need to vote for the uh the motion as amended to put out the RFP, but do it in December.
The amendment to do it in December, he seconded.
Why aren't we letting the administrator do his job?
That's, that's.
That's what they requested.
That's what the administrator. Yeah.
So I mean, but the thing is, he may come in tomorrow and have another fire to put out. I mean, the thing is, we hire people. Why don't we tell the police chief where to put the cars tomorrow night? Why don't we tell?
We're okay. I think we're okay. I think we're okay.
I'll shut up.
I think Mr. Rayner knows what to do um if this thing moves forward. So let's see where we go.
So what are we voting on first? The amendment?
We have to vote on the amendment, which would be to uh
Release it.
Release the RFP in December. All those in favor?
No.
Motion passed as six to one. Now.
Main motion.
The main motion, which was to issue a second RFP, an RFP for uh to the operation of the transfer station as it currently uh exits with the curve, no.
Same as the bottom line he wrote.
Yeah.
It's the issue of the transfer station um in its entirety with all current services. The bags are irrelevant. That's, that's um.
That's a payment issue.
That's a separate issue. So we have a a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
No.
The motion passes six to zero. Okay. We are gonna move on.
Move to receiving place on five.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Okay.
And and for folks, just as a point of clarification, I know uh Mr. Rayner mentioned the February third day, but don't forget this trampy town hall is open for regular business every Thursday night till six thirty. So if you need to get your sticker, you can get it there. If you have to work, normal nine to five job like the rest of us up here.
At no extra cost to the town.
Future meetings, February twelfth, back at town council chambers, February twenty-sixth, town council chambers and March eleventh, town council chamber. Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All of them favor? Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all.